Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ken Smith. I have the privilege to serve as the mayor of the city of Bader. I am grateful to have all of our council members with us, present at this regularly scheduled city council meeting, as well as so many visiting dignitaries and residents of our fine community. With that, I'll officially declare this a meeting called to order at 6:02 PM and would invite our city council to conduct our roll call.
Okay. Judy Costello here, Jason Daley.
Here.
Joe Schei.
Here.
Mike Parsons.
Here.
Leona Sander-Hunter.
Here.
And Mayor Smith.
Also present. With that, we have a full quorum, so let's proceed with our pledge of allegiance.
Mayor, while we're in this mode, can we make this correction or do you want to wait and add that later?
Let's wait.
Okay.
So, Mike, would you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let's proceed with our agenda. And the first item is the mayor's report. And, believe it or not, I don't have any thing that is not going to be addressed at some point in our council meeting, so I would suggest we proceed with our council reports.
I have one.
Okay.
I need to start up. First up, I want to apologize to everyone. This is not my personality. I would like to say, the next time that there's a special meeting called, and I'm not properly notified of it, that we are all going to call, get ourselves together, and have a discussion. There's an RCW that covers that. And I was very disappointed that that was such an urgency that we could not wait until tonight. Five days would not have hurt to wait for that man's contract. He has not worked for that company since July. What was the sudden urgency? So, in the future, I would appreciate it if we are notified properly, as council people, to come to special meetings. Thank you. And can I apologize?
Pardon, as I said, your right and privilege. Okay. All right, well, now may be an appropriate time to exercise the proper motion to correct the action involving Mr. Schei and his absence at our last council meeting. So, I understand that it was, it should have been excused, but that it was, the motion was made to designate it as unexcused. Would a member of the council like to engage in a motion to correct that?
Go ahead. I'll move to change the status of Joe Schei's attendance record from unexcused to excused for the meeting held on August 9th, 2018.
Okay. We've heard the motions submitted by Mr. Parsons to designate or redesignate Mr. Schei's absence at our last council meeting from unexcused to excused. Now, do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mrs. Costello. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion is carried. All right, let's proceed now with the agenda approval for tonight's council meeting. I don't have any additional agenda items. If a council member has, now will be a time to mention it.
Can I just make a comment? I'm sorry, Mike, but I thought at our last meeting, we were not going to talk about the home base businesses again, and four of us voted, including you. So, why is it on the agenda again?
As I said right after that motion, I did not intend for that to be part of it. It shouldn't have been part of it. And I said at that meeting that I will be bringing it back up at the next meeting, because it should not have been part of that same motion. I don't know why they were combined all of a sudden.
As I recall, when an item has been successfully addressed by the council, based on the agenda, and a motion has been passed, you can't go back at that same council meeting and revisit the topic. But it is okay to put it on the subsequent council meeting. So, that's what is prompted us to add in addition.
Thank you for that clarity.
All right, then, with that, do we have a motion to approve tonight's council meeting agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the city council meeting agenda for 8/23/2018.
Mr. Daley submitted a motion to approve the minutes, as noted. Do we have a second?
Are you doing an agenda?
Yes.
Oh, you said minutes.
Oh, did I say minutes? I'm sorry, yes, not looking good. So, for the motion to approve the meeting agenda for this evening, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Parsons. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion is carried. Approval for our minutes now. Hopefully, we had a chance to read them.
I make a motion to approve city council meeting minutes from 8, 9, and 2018, as written.
Okay. We've heard the motions submitted by Mrs. Costello to approve the previous minutes, as noted. And we have a second.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mrs. Hunter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? That motion is carried. Now, our voucher approvals for the previous, for this month, to date.
I'll make a motion to approve vouchers, first half of August 2018, the amount of $21,803.09 for the end of August, total of $48,347.05 for the August 2018 total of $70,150.14.
Okay. Mr. Schei has submitted a motion to approve the voucher expenditures in the amounts noted. Do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mrs. Costello. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. All right, we'll now be pleased to have, hopefully, three special reports. First, we're anxious to hear a report from the Woods County Public Works for Bader and the Chandler Valley Water System, and we're grateful to have Betsy Dillon with us to give that report.
Hi, yeah, I'm Betsy Dillon, representing the water system. And we wanted to come out tonight to make you guys aware of some upcoming proposed changes that we have to our billing. I've got two things that I want to tell you guys. The first one is that we are proposing a 5% rate increase, and that is to the base charge and to the usage charge. And so, that would go from $44.81 per month to the base charge to $47.05, so an increase of $3.24. And then, a usage increase from $6.70 per thousand gallons to $5.705, so an increase of .35 per thousand gallons. And that is proposed, we have hearings that are September 10th, so you guys are welcome to come and be heard at the hearing at the 10 a.m. at the county courthouse in the hearing room. The other change that we want you guys to know of is that we're proposing to change our billing schedule. So, we do bimonthly billing. We're not going to change that, but right now, our billing, we have December and January on the same bill, and we would like to have November and December on the same bill instead, so it aligns better with the calendar year. So, we're proposing that we'll have a one-month bill in November, and then we're going to shift to a new billing schedule. So, that means you'll have an October bill, which will be your August, September usage. You'll have a November bill, which will just be one month till October, and then it'll start being regular every other month. Does that make sense to everybody? Okay. So, hopefully, that the idea is to have one smaller bill in between the transition.
Okay, all right.
The public hearing, the 10 a.m.?
Just a little bit of time.
Okay, yeah. All right, thank you for that report. Perhaps we could inquire as to how the project is going.
Oh, yeah, yeah, the project is going well. So, we have construction started. They've done all their mass excavation. The pad is flat. They've put down foundation rock. It'll be coming out on Monday to do the foundation of the tank.
Okay. When do you think it'll be completed?
Some summer of next year. So, there'll be, there will be some downtime in the winter because of weather, and they can't paint it until it's nice and dry out. So, I anticipate it'll be next summer.
Okay, great, excellent report. Thank you so much. Okay. Next, I anticipate that we'll hear a park board report from a member of the park board, friends of us, and invite him to the podium.
Oh, an associate.
And Kelly, Kelly, too.
And the chairperson.
I beg you to come.
You're a spore.
Okay, well, first of all, I will apologize that I didn't wear, I wasn't aware of what I could do as far as this project on McMurphy Park. So, last year's been spent, basically, in my opinion, wasted, but I'm working very hard at trying to get this thing going. So, Kelly and I and the board have been, we're working, trying to get McMurphy Park... You're all nervous. So, anyway, I've gathered a bunch of information on the last month and a half, trying to get stuff going on this thing. What we would like to do, or what I would like to do, all the stuff that I've gathered, I kind of felt like I was doing stuff that I wasn't supposed to be doing, so I wanted to keep you guys posted of what I've been doing as far as gathering the information. I'm pretty sure that you all want McMurphy Park to proceed and get built and up and running and utilize what we all want for the community and stuff. So, some of the information that I've gathered so far, and I'd like to have a checklist or of stuff that you guys want information from, because I'm really good at gathering the information on, with my job that I have. So far, I've talked with two engineering companies, well, actually, our engineering company that the city has. I've also talked with another engineering company. Kelly and I have talked that we would like to have some RV pads for the park. We want to have about five to six RV pads. I've talked with some septic companies for designing septic systems. I've also talked with our, this is a big issue that was, that I felt that was always hitting us in the head, was water. So, the water, I finally figured out, talking with her, nice and neat over at the podium, is that the water, to have water run out to that park is going to cost us about a quarter million dollars. So, I was like, in my mind, that was like way out of the ballpark. So, I instantly said, okay, we'll drill a well. So, I called some drilling companies, and we can drill a well for about $10,000. So, I thought that was more adequate stuff. I've also contacted the same company that did Warden Park, the bathrooms there, and I had them email me some designs for some bathrooms slash showers, because I want to have showers for the RVs, and then I also want to have showers for the bike race that comes through, the SDP. We also want to have some tent spots for people camping, just throwing up a tent area and stuff like that. I'm guessing the whole project's going to cost around $250,000 in my dollar, what I've kind of calculated it up. I've made a bunch of phone calls. Jill has gotten a binder for me. It's here at the city hall. So, basically, what Kelly and I think we would like is, and I was talking with Jill, what some of the steps that you guys are probably going to ask us for is, is a drawing and a proposal. This is what we're talking about doing and stuff. So, what I was thinking about doing is, our next board meeting in September...
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth, we'll, between now and the 17th of September, I will get stuff together. On the 17th, I'll go over that with our board and have it all laid out as far as the plans and stuff like that, and then come to you guys the following meeting and say, have it drawn out, and you guys can evaluate and see where we need to go. I'm sure there's going to be some money that we're going to need to go after and try to find. Jill was talking to me about some programs that we can try to do and stuff like that, and I'm more than willing to try to get into that and do some of that stuff during the daytime.
Great.
I think one of the things that I've, we've been waiting for is like a five-year plan. Is that something that you've been working on? Is that what you're talking about?
The five-year, yeah, the five-year plan, and I didn't know, that was part of my course, that I thought we had to get the five-year plan done first and before we get this.
Before you can start one project, you've got to have that done, so...
So, the five-year plan is actually almost done. It's in the rough draft. I'm actually going through and editing everything out. My bad this time, but it's been dragging out because I'm doing it when I can. But, it is almost done. I actually am to the point where I'm just putting in pictures now, and then I'm submitting it into Jill here in the next week or two, and that will be done. We also have, the next step for any additional big projects, like what Ken is talking about, is the map project illustration that we need to do. It's kind of like placement of where we like to see things that also have to get submitted in eventually, you said, to the city planner?
Planner.
Is that correct? So, we're juggling multiple parts of it at the same time. Obviously, we can't continue fully forward until that part is done, but it's already, it's already pretty much finished. So, it's a matter of me making sure that I didn't misspell anything or autocorrect and change things that weren't supposed to be there, so...
Right, because there's a lot of things on there that, I mean, as far as five-year plan goes, that I think that there's other more important things than showers for SDP riders.
Yes, so the part that Ken was talking about specifically was the project that he is looking at trying to get work done for it, is specifically getting the well and sewer, water and sewer out to McMurphy Park. The bathrooms and everything else, that is what will come along with it once that's in there. So, it's the big goal step.
The city knows how hard it is to drill a well for that nine to one.
Yeah, so that's, the well option is something that we're entertaining, we're looking at to find out what we can and cannot even do. We may not be able to do it at all. We may be able to. We know that it's a tricky area because we have the Olaq right through there, and we may not be able to because of permitting and environmental impact and everything.
Well, they never did, but...
Yeah. He drove two.
But that's also, but that's also for...
Oh, five? Oh, I was told two.
I thought it was two.
He told me two.
Yeah, well, I know it was over $25,000. So, your $10,000 estimate might be okay if it happens the first time.
Exactly.
I think we'll get water, but...
So, but with that, we do know that, you know, we're doing it not for private residents, we're doing it for a public park area that may have higher usage sometimes than others.
And that's something that I'm shooting for, that's why I want to have enough water pressure and enough septic system to provide adequate septic systems for campers and bicycles and enough shower space and bathroom space for all that, for the people and stuff. I have a, something that I've gone through life real early is, I have a thing that I always try to tell myself is positive mental attitude. So, I always try to tell that self, myself, that all the time. So, anytime somebody says negative stuff, no matter what they say to me, it's always comes back as that. So, if you guys say anything negative, downgrading this project, it's going in one ear and right up at it.
I think you sound wonderful.
Sounds great. Yes, yes. We're like, dig stuff, playground equipment, before we go to like septic tanks and...
Yeah, so that is one part that Ken is working on. If you want real quick, a quick rundown of some of the things that we are currently doing, I can give that to you. We do have plans for playground equipment going in. We do, we have, that's part of what we have to actually draw out, not in the five-year plan specifically. That part was really confusing and hard to kind of wrap around, is that if that plan does not have every single item listed out that you want to have, it has the general picture, and then you have the more specific that gets drawn out in research, and you find out the costs and hunt out the grants and everything. So, that's all on there, too. That's, it's one way or another, all of that's being worked in. Yeah.
The RV pads that I want to have, this is one reason why I want to have, and also have the tied in all at the same time, is our maintenance guy spends a lot of time in the spring and late fall mowing that, and we always have a lot of problems with vandalism down there. So, my plan with these RV pads is to have, hire a camp host. Camp host would stay there free of charge besides, except for the utilities and stuff, and his job would be to take care of the grounds and also security. And then, we don't have to worry about problems down there, people, we can keep the gates open year-round, and we don't have to have problems, because he's going to be posted right there at the front of the gate somewhere, so he knows what, he or she will know what's coming in and out of that place. So, our security problem will be eliminated, knock on wood, that, once we get those RV pads up there. And that's one reason why I'm stressing to have that all put in the same time, is to eliminate that vandalism and stuff. Yes?
I was just going to ask, before you finish your presentation, would you talk about the Lions Club?
I have that on here. I do have it on here.
I'm sensitive about the security thing. I think that's something that's been always brought up, I think Andy Wilson brought it up a long, long time ago about wanting that. But I'm also sensitive to the fact that, you know, right across the fence line is the neighbor, and, you know, to have overnight camping, as far as like public overnight camping, you know, that's, that's another fight that we're going to have.
Why would he, it's our, it's the city's park.
I know.
Why, how's he going to, I mean, if we set regulations and camping regulations and stuff, how's he going to say, he can't dictate what happens in the city park.
He's worried about like noise.
I mean, yeah, and I understand that.
Traffic and everything.
Noise and traffic.
Yeah.
But he's not just, not just for just the neighbor, I'm talking for the street.
The community, yeah.
You know, without having a regular patrolman and stuff like that, so...
Lars Larson said the other day on the radio...
You're not trying to be negative.
No, 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 and I'm giving an example, that Lars Larson gave example, you buy a house that's downtown Seattle, and you all of a sudden buy that house, and it's all of a sudden loud at night, you can't go to the city and say, excuse me, everybody needs to shut up because I just moved in here. That park was there before that guy was there, I'm guessing. No, maybe?
The park, the property was donated to the city, probably.
Okay, but, well, but my example, but my example is, we can't, we can't...
You know, and on the other hand, you know, to save, to save the room that six RV places would take for like, you know, horseshoe pits or something that more of the public could use than just the RV parkers or more of the specific, you know...
See, and I see it as a revenue.
And that's, it's...
It's a catch-22.
It's going to be a revenue, and that's one reason I want it. I mean, we're going to start slow and build on it. And that's, I mean, the revenue's going to come, but it's more security right now.
Well, I've mentioned this before, but I think it'd be appropriate to remind you that one of the positives of having those pads, it opened or paves the way for the city to apply for own funds, which you probably know the county commissioners have, and it's a sizable pot of money, and they're looking for little cities like ours to approach them with projects that bring people as tourists, which that would accomplish, whether it's a hotel or some such facility like this. And they could possibly provide all of the financing for the entire project.
Sites and...
You've got it.
Frisbee Golf, Frisbee Golf course, but do it also.
Yeah, so that's the enticement, to put that in.
And like I said, it's just going to, we're going to have to build slow and then...
Right, right. And build...
It's pretty intimidating when you start talking big picture, because you start visualizing the whole place just pass.
And I apologize, I was on the park board, and I had a whole grander picture, a grand picture of the park, and then I wasn't on the park board, so I've been waiting for you guys to just bring a map of the park, what you guys think, so we could...
Well, here, here we are. We're going to do it.
I've got lots of suggestions, so...
I'll take anything you've got.
That's fantastic.
So, just a real quick summary, here then.
Well, okay, you go ahead.
Oh, okay.
Our council's meeting.
Okay, all right.
So, just a real quick summary of everything else that's been kind of going on right now, going by the parks, since we're talking about McMurphy right now. One of our new members, our park board members, Elena, she's currently researching doggy waste site cleanups, because apparently that's been a pretty big issue down there. We have, we have some sketches that we're tentatively working on while we're continuing doing our research. We are also, we've discussed and talked about, we want security cameras down there, so we're talking about the cost for installation, for monthly, for the power, what that would look like, before we bring that to you guys for our hopefully approval eventually. And then, Ken has been working on the sewer and water options, so that we can eventually add bathrooms and showers. With Warden Park, we have had hoop nets donated by a community member, I think he was 16-year-old who lives, not, who lives here in town, he likes going over to Warden, so he noticed the nets were missing, and he donated those. Our bathroom doors have, for the jail, or for the jail park, they were not actually locking or even shutting all the way at night, so I believe those have been repaired now, too, right?
I think so, yes.
So, last time we were there, it looked like they were working. So, we do have volunteers and a city council member, too, who is also a volunteer to help finish painting our jail building, hopefully before our weather changes. And we will, hopefully in the next, hopefully by this upcoming week, we will have a updated bid on foundation repairs. We are not planning on moving the jail. We're planning on re, on getting it repaired, so that it can get opened up eventually as well. We have a bid coming in for that, and we also have had a community member, a discussion about how there is a community member who is interested in supplying labor and materials to doing it, but we haven't heard anything else back about that. So, we have two things kind of in the works there. We have, the Lions Club is one of our big things right now. They are donating materials and labor to putting in new garden beds that match the cinder block garden beds that they put over by the post office and across the street. So, we had approved that, their donation for that, and that, once our street project was completed, and I believe it was Rich, is going to be, he has Ken's number, and they're going to go over there, and he's going to show them exactly what they're looking at doing, so that we can approve that final part of the donation.
I'm also going to, for the flower beds, I talked to him about getting the topsoil from my company, and I said that he needed to get ahold of me, and so I could help him get that and stuff.
So, they had a $700 budget for their donation, and the majority of their budget sounded like it was being taken up by the dirt, the topsoil, and so, Ken's going to hopefully be able to help them reduce that, the cost of everything for it. So, that's kind of us in a nutshell right now. So, are there any other questions, or...
The council, like, Andrew King, go ahead. Go ahead.
While I was traveling around kind of between jobs, some of the nicer places I stayed at was city and county parks. Now, some of these parks had no water, no sewer, no electricity, but it had a gravel pad where you could pull off to. And that was fine because we were self-contained and we figured we could dump someplace else. You're, you're talking putting concrete pads in?
Yes.
Originally, and I, I kind of think that would work later at stage two, say, where you put in the, the full services.
I also want to put in sprinkler system around the RV pads so we, so the RVers have a green piece of grass. Cause one night that Kelly and I met down there during July, the grass was all dead. And I had sandals on and it hurt my feet just to walk on it. So I, I would not want to have a $50,000 RV and come to a park and have dead grass around it. So I was proposing that we have, I mean, just a small little patch of small green grass around that people could pull up and run their feet through.
Having that as a base to do the project is a really good idea.
Alright, well, thank you, that's it.
Oh, did Jason have his hand up?
I'd like to tell you that I've heard nothing but positive things about McMurphy Park all summer long. It has blown up on Facebook, there's people everywhere, oh, have you been, you've seen Toledo, my kids are all going, so best kept secrets out.
And I would say, there's something I've also.
I'm gonna say I've been seeing kids, they're, they're posting on there, we're taking my kids down, anybody want to bring their kids down? I'm thinking of that, that was the meeting.
Well, one of the things too that we've had coming up too that is gonna be, we're gonna be meeting up with Stephanie too is about. There's interest over by Warden Park putting in a children's community library box. So just nothing crazy, just a nice little box that they can put books in that are children bait, you know, children themed and they can, they can do a swap. So it'll be kind of an addition to or an expansion off of maybe what we already have here is our community library. And a lot of people don't have knowledge about this as well and it's been getting tied into parks for some reason. A lot of people have been coming to us and talking about it and finding ways to implement it. So maybe want to try and get more advertising out about the, our community library in addition to.
Great, excellent report and we are so grateful for the action-oriented approach. These are getting done, our little community. Alright, I noted that number three was a planning committee report.
Yes, I was not successful in reaching the planning committee chairperson. But I would like to state in their defense that the last several meetings in a row, we have had somebody scheduled to come and meet with them. Either from the economic development council or from the county planning and for one reason or another it has fallen through. So they have been kind of treading water a little bit, waiting to, to work on that. So I, I don't suspect that they had much to report at this point. They are continuing to meet and, but trying to work on ideas for.
It'll help to have Gary Cooper on board.
That will help too, yes.
Alrighty, then with that, we will dispense with the planning committee report for tonight. But with that, let's proceed with our city business. Council to consider Barkov construction pay request number two, kind of a pro forma action. Awake council action on that item.
Can we get to talk before we go?
Absolutely, that's what I mean.
Can we, can we talk about the grass that got?
Hydro seed?
The hydro seed, we put the dirt down, they blew the hydro seed in and it's dead. And I noticed you have something on the agenda on number four, is that going to cover my question?
It will.
Okay, alright. And then also I noticed in here that we had a change order of $147,000. They had to go dig out number two, they dug it out once and then they turned it out and dug it out number two, so it was, and so that all came out of the initial 750.
It did, within the cost parameters of the project.
So the TIB, the funders of it, they allow for a certain percentage of these type of things to rent. And I want to say it's 30%, but I don't know if that's the right number or not. But the change orders, what they found was that, that soupy stuff underneath the asphalt that was there. So they had to redig that out and put in more solid underlayment for the road. And so, but it all fell in what TIB approved, they approved an increase. So it's all covered by the grant, there isn't anything on here that is necessarily covered at all in that. And it was kind of my thought that, I keep looking at Joe and I shouldn't.
Don't look at me, it's okay.
I was under the impression and possibly I'm, I'm obviously wrong, but we did not get five folders or plant hangers on our lighting. And when I spoke to the gentleman hanging it, they said, well, perhaps your public works is gonna come back behind us and put them up. And I said, mm, probably not. So they did not.
Right, yeah, that was not in the, if I remember back last year when we were approving it, we were talking about trying to stay within the budget. There's only so much for landscaping and we got the better light fixtures, but we didn't get the, the hangers. But we can, we can get the company and figure out and get ahold of them and get them ourselves, which I think would be great.
They're expensive.
Well, I wanted to add a thought on the go back here. The overrun there and that the, the street construction phase.
The change order?
Yeah, the change order. It's out there and watching them deal with that unforeseen and unexpected geological challenge. And I can tell you that the city got a pretty good deal on that. Because there was some considerable consternation on the part of the contractor. Going to go back and add that major project to the, the scope of their work. So from my perspective, the city came out pretty well on that. So a lot of people aren't aware of that, but very fortunate. So with that, any other council thoughts or?
Were there issues fixed that you had concerns about? You mentioned some issues with some cement areas or something?
Oh, yeah, thank you for mentioning that. It's still under advisement, we're withholding pay to the cement contractor. Their, of course, work under Barkov's supervision. And Barkov is supportive and sensitive, or maybe I don't know if supportive is the right word, but they're sensitive to our concerns about the workmanship involved with the cement. And they're not contesting our concerns about it. So right now it's still under deliberation and consideration, but we're in a very strong position.
Are those concerns possibly the, the chips are already on the curves?
Yes, as part of it, there are half, maybe about a dozen weaknesses in it. And if any are interested in it, we could certainly show you. But I don't think a layman would necessarily discern them. But I'm very impressed with Devin Jackson, he is a strong and vocal advocate for the city. And he is a meticulous engineer, he's, he's the one that brought it to our attention. He's, he has to maintain his neutrality, of course, but he's given us what I think is a very wise guidance and counsel as to how to deal with it. So far, I feel very confident that we're going to win this little battle, if you want to call it.
So where in this is he withholding? If you look here, all these blanks left on that far right column are all cement.
All laid in, so that's where they're.
So that's, yeah, he hasn't requested any payment for that yet.
If we authorize payment, then the big thing, you know, that just goes and then how does he, okay, so.
Yeah, okay, we haven't, we haven't, that's, yeah, we haven't authorized any cement payment at all.
Alrighty, so any further commentary, anticipating some council action?
I move to approve the Barkov construction pay request number two in the amount of $189,529.70.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Schein submitted the motion to approve this request to pay request number two in the amount noted. But we have a second.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Parsons. Any further thoughts, commentary during that? All on paper, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, that motion is carried, thank you. Okay, number two, the council to discuss the ongoing challenge with our land slash yard waste disposal. So I think that we're well versed in the situation, aware that the previous pile of limbs, the mountain of limbs has been removed. And so I think the objective of this council agenda item is to see what sorts of potential solutions might emerge with your Yankee Lick ingenuity.
I spoke with the Lewis County, Steve, oh, he's the manager over there at the Lewis County Transfer Station.
Steve Skinner.
Skinner, yep. And he was, they charge $60 a ton out there. I told him what we're wanting to do and he was, he was saying between $5 to $10 a truckload, he thought might work. I also talked with Chehalis Rentals, they're willing to send the chipper out, well, I'll just read it straight from them. We will send the chipper out for a 24 hour rental period and only charge the time used on the machine. So in the middle of the week, we can get the chipper out here, if we do two hours on it, it's $50. If we do three hours, it's $75, four hours is 108 hours is 135. But with that, we'd be able to, if we charge between $5 to $10, somewhere in there, to dump. And then hopefully that money pays for the chipper. We shove it right in, we shoot it straight into the, the new square compartment that's out there. And then he was also saying to sell the, the chips at $5 a load. And hopefully we'll, you know, if we, if we start out at five and then we realize that it's not going to be five to dump and five to pick up. We realize it's not going to work, then we can up it a little bit just so that we get to the black line. But that's, that's all I've got for right now.
What was the first one that you mentioned with Steve Skinner again?
The.
The Lewis County.
He was quoting, quoting the $60.
$60 a ton, yep. That's what they charge.
It was the truck part.
He, he didn't have a truck price, but he thought suggested between $5 to $10. At first he said $10.
So if you bring a truck load, it would be about $5 to $10.
No, he was, he was.
Trying to come up with the price for us.
Yeah, because we don't have a scale. So with that putting a scale in there, we just figure out how much time it's gonna take to chip it and the cost of this.
My capic is the chipper that tightens.
It's, it's a 25 horse, takes up to six inch.
Six inch, that's the same ones that we rented before, I don't know if you've seen those.
I've rented before, yeah, I've rented in place in the last three months, clearly my property.
What is the value of them, does anyone know that?
I've been looking at them and they're between 15 to 25, I've seen used, thousand.
For that size?
I don't know exactly that size, but.
To take the six inch, I mean.
Yeah, yeah, it's the pole behind.
I have to tell you, using it as a hill, if they take six inches, I'll leave my head.
It didn't, that was, that was another thing that.
I don't know, I, I've used it before, didn't it? After being prompted.
Yes, that was, that was an issue that somebody else brought up when I was, I don't remember who I was talking to, but they said, be careful with those ones because. They clog up and blah, blah, blah. But I do know that there's. I've rented one personally from a, from a friend of a friend and it, it ate anything I put into it. And it took a half an hour for it to turn, like I'd turn the motor off and that thing would spin for a half an hour slowing down. And it, it was really scary. But we can, we can look into getting another chipper, but to me, this would be the fastest way to get it back open. So that we can have people start dumping it in there.
Have we decided a designated area for flower bed stuff to start the compost pile? I saw where the, the.
The cement thing.
The blocks are, I saw where that is, but do, do we have any idea of where we want to, because we don't want to put stuff in it, obviously. And we don't want this to just all start filling up out there. So do we have a thought on where to put some of this little stuff? Because there's gonna be some of that showing up.
I haven't.
What do you mean, like grass clippings and leaves?
Grass clippings and leaves and mulch, yeah, stuff to mulch, yeah.
I do know that those blocks were, I think they, he said that you can get them for about 25 to 30 bucks each. So it might behoove us to make another bin. And I mean, ultimately it'd be nice to have two or three of them out there so that we can rotate it from bin to bin. Have.
I don't want to be a party pooper, but you realize, I know, but you realize that property is not the city's property.
Yeah, but those are, those are temporary though that we're putting there and they can be picked up and relocated. I know, I'm just saying, putting too much, I mean.
Too much stuff.
Makes me nervous that we're building city's structure on property that's not ours without their permission.
You're trying to get an easement for that little area, aren't you?
They're talking about getting a construction easement, which means to only during the construction, they can drive on it and stuff like that, but not.
Why did we clean it then?
Well, because we let people dump stuff there, it was our, it was our piles.
I kind of agree with that, but since I'm the administrator of it and we've spoken with Burlington Northern before. Knowing how obstinate they can be, I still think that if we approach them kindly and with civility, they might talk to us about it and see if. I think they might grant us authorization.
Yeah, I, I was researching whether we had an easement for that because of, they were asking me to do that for the waste treatment issue. And, and I could not find one and I checked with Burlington North and they could not find any kind of easement or agreement. But there are easement and agreements out there, so with other people for other things. So I would think that we should be able to do something, but I think that's something that council needs to be aware of, that maybe we should look into. So that before we spend a bunch of money putting stuff down there, maybe make sure we can. I'd like to make a suggestion on all bigger branches, you know, even the four, five, six inch. Those up into firewood and give those to people, invader that can afford to buy a, you know, yard wood or whatever, but use it. Don't chip it, give it to somebody that can actually use it to keep it warm.
Okay, well, that's the best idea I've heard. It's nice of Chehalis Rental to offer that. It's nice of Chehalis Rental to offer that, and they would bring it and take it back.
No, I would. I would, or somebody would go get it.
The question is then, who would chip it?
Who would man it, who would take the money, who would do the chipping?
We'll take the money, but I don't want to do the chipping.
I don't mind volunteering to take the money either and do the things, but I don't know anything about chipping.
Yeah, well, I've chipped plenty, but the mayor doesn't want to become the community chipping.
I know you could run a minor.
I guess I know.
Does it have to be, I mean, my, my husband come down and run it for an hour or so, or we just have to be somebody?
We've had volunteers do it in the past as like a part, like a chipping party or whatever, when we've had piles down there. I don't know why volunteers couldn't, we'd just have to have it set up properly so that it could be safe and.
Well, we could use Dave on both sides, then he can cut the branches off the bigger ones and then cut them in reasonable, you know, firewood pieces and then run the branch through the chipper. We could really take advantage of that.
He loves that chainsaw.
Loves his chainsaw.
And I would mind helping if it was scheduled, I can schedule some time.
We can probably get volunteers to, but you think Dave would be willing to?
Oh, yeah, he'll help.
That's right.
If he wants dinner, he'll help. Just kidding, he'll help, he'd be glad.
So are we talking about like having it open once a month or like every weekend or like?
I think originally it was up to Saturdays and Saturdays a month.
That's what we were willing to.
Yeah.
To man it. And are we thinking with a receipt book? What are we thinking as far as having to have some.
Setting up a receipt book and maybe a little cash for something, yeah, we'd have to do something like that.
And did we ever decide were we keeping it contained to Vader, not opening it up to?
That, that was never decided that I'm aware of.
I just would be uncomfortable opening it up to Southwest Lewis County.
Yeah.
Get us back into.
You open the door.
And how will we?
I was supposed to say one of the things that like even the dump does, you have to bring your water bill or something, something, address, they have to prove.
Try and rely on.
During something.
Unless it's a face we recognize and have that system.
And also, is, I mean, I know that every man that I knows, if we, since we're collecting money, we can do some kind of lunch. We can get a lot of volunteers if we feed them. This is my suggestion.
But the, the chipping, the chipping, they would, Chehalis would rather it go on in the middle of the week.
Right, yeah, so we collect the stuff on like a Saturday.
Collect it and then turn around.
Chip it to the next Saturday, we can collect.
Which would be nice so that we don't have people getting shot with the chipper and so on and so forth. But we would also want to, who's ever out there, you'd want to figure putting the chipper so that it's shooting into the thing and then the pile just off to the side of it, but not right too close and. So offloading would be strategic and hopefully it doesn't get big, too big, too fast.
Well, then if it started.
And we just get it, every week, we get the chipper.
I'm sorry, if it started looking like they were lined up all the way to my house to get in there, we would just have to.
Up the press.
Well, or stop it, say we've got enough, we have to be able to, to stay on top of this, you know? So every other week, we would open the gate and then the off week, we would chip.
That seems like a plan.
The chipper would be here in the midweek, though.
Right, well, no, but, but Dave would go down in the middle of the week and then, and then we would be on Saturday and then he'd come back on, I don't know, Tuesday, Wednesday or something and chip or whatever. Whatever how we on the schedule, it would be.
Trust me, we would have to be there with Dave.
Well, it does help had two people.
Especially when one's running a chainsaw.
Yeah. All right, well, okay. I sense that there may be a tension that I didn't think might exist before. So should we explore, would you operate there and the city administration to get the facts and set, or get a plan in place? A proposal for the council officially, working with your sources.
Or do we just want to get it started?
For getting the county chipper and then we know when we can open it up for the first Saturday, I guess.
Yeah, we'd want to probably get a calendar, a schedule, volunteers, and who's going to bring the, the chipper back and forth, and that's what I'm.
What times it's going to be open.
Get the notice out to the public.
When does that next sewer bill come out?
Let's see, they're due September, so it'll come out in October.
Almost too far away.
Yeah, we have just had them go out in August.
Okay, well, I saw the consensus of the head body, I don't know if we need this in an official motion.
I think we know where we're at.
Okay, then we will press ahead. That, let's proceed now with our discussion on the home-based business regulation.
So just to be clear, the last motion, I talked to most everybody else and they were not under the impression that it was both topics also. Yeah, so I wanted to bring that, open that back up and bring it up so that we can start talking about getting some stuff done to, to do the businesses and in Vader. I know that I've been sharing the idea a lot at the Clark County Fair and Chehalis Fair. And everybody that we talked to was, oh, that would be so neat, we could go into town and have lunch and hit all the little shops and so on and so forth. And so I feel that the revenue that's going to come in from it is going to be big and so just opening it back up.
We currently have an ordinance allowing home-based businesses. A, and B, I think the only thing that's missing on that home-based business is categories of what we want. Unless I'm mistaken, I thought that was kind of.
I think we are.
I think there's all the regulations of, of how many vehicles you can have at your, your house, all those kinds of regulations. We don't have any of that kind of thing in place, so all of our home-based business kind of thing is more about.
It's not your home as a retail location?
Right, not as a retail.
The storefronts, the.
As we're still talking about, if we're going back to, my understanding was that it would be more of a retail. They could come and make purchases and things like that, then that's when those other regulations get pulled in, where the city will want to think about that. See, that's why I thought we just, deep sixted, I believe, was the term the mayor used, was on both of these, was because of information that the attorney gave of all the rules and regulations were kind of scary on both situations.
My sense was that there were guidelines in place that would allow it, but, but I would have to agree, if it turned into a retail type sort of function, there's going to have to be some modification of the current ordinance. But it doesn't mean it can't be done. I do not think personally that it'll have the same onerous type constraints that having a second residential dwelling unit. So I.
And I'm not even sure why those two became a one item.
The attorney was.
Well, they, they weren't, they were two topic, they're both development regulation items. They both refer to making changes to the development regulations and both of them require those same guidelines to be met in that, that you have to go through the same processes to change your development regulations. So that's why they were on the same memo, because it's the same process for both.
So, so to do retail, you still have to go through the CIPA report, the, that whole process and six, eight months with, what was it, the Commerce?
Yeah, with, yeah, Department of Commerce has to review it.
Well, is that entirely true? Is the CIPA requirement part of the home-based business?
Yes, because my understanding from the memo is that it requires a change to the development regulations. And anytime you do that, you have to go through that process. Now, we can clarify.
Yeah, I think we might want to clarify that.
Because she, that's the way she presented it in the memo, at least that's the way I understood it.
Great, but there isn't anything that is not insurmountable in it. It just, there will be some time taken in order to have the public hearings and to get, like you say, the Washington State Department of Commerce briefed and so forth. It can be done.
What size retail space are we talking here?
So it's the same stuff that you brought in with the Napa vine and the, the little five hundred square foot or less.
Or the garage, or their one room and their home, or that kind of thing?
Yes. Yep, so it's the same, it's what we've been talking about and it's, it's an opportunity. This all started because we were looking for revenue in the city. And we don't have the commercial area for somebody to come in and build a building and be able to afford to build the building and start the business up in this area. So by doing the cottage industry, which a lot of cities are doing now, and that's the new end thing, and it would be able to bring people into town and spend their money, which we get a piece of.
I wonder if that would fall under the development improvements, like what you're talking about with the oh nine funds, where the county is looking for ways to draw people in?
It might.
I wonder, maybe we could get some funding for some of this, that, I mean, I don't.
Above that, that's a possibility.
Economically, I don't know.
It's easy to make an application, yep, you just, they're open to most any idea that we're willing to articulate.
What type of costs is it going to take to get that six-month period of, of Washington State Commerce? The CIPA is the, that kind of stuff. Commerce isn't going to cost anything, for Commerce to review it, they don't charge us anything to review it. We have to pay our planner to do the environmental review process. I don't know, we'd have to ask him, I don't have experience with that. We'd have to ask him how much time and if we can determine a cost based on that, what he thinks. And maybe we can get estimates, we can get estimates from the city attorney, what she thinks it would take to write something like that, that kind of change the development regulations. And then an estimate from the planner as well, those are really the two main costs that are involved. I'm not interested in spending money on the planner or the attorney, so I'm going to be one of Ken Jocelyn's boo hoo people up here. I'm going to be a negative Nancy, sorry folks, but if we could get grant money for it, I'd pay for it, I don't know if it would.
Nothing ventured, nothing gained, and that's why we have by a council.
So who's the person that we would need to talk to for that, that grant?
Do you know who that is?
Oh, that would be the county commissioners, right. Yeah, they have an official representative, it's been a while, but we can easily track that down.
I think you'd be a good person to talk, you, you could excite them. Clark Jackson's easily excited. Loves that kind of stuff, yeah.
But as far as the, the costs incurred by our planner and such, I wouldn't anticipate that it's going to be excessively expensive. So I wouldn't let that necessarily.
The cool part about it, though, is that it'll bring the money back in. So, yeah, it might cost something now, but it'll bring revenue in.
Yep. All right. It sounds to me like, based on what I'm hearing, is that we should, the city administration initiate some outreach efforts to get information.
Trying to make that into motion.
I think Mike was going to do that, or do you want?
I'll talk to the, I'll talk to the county commissioner's office.
Okay, feel free.
Find out.
Okay, and we could reach out to our, the city attorney and find out what she would, might anticipate would be the time requirements. Maybe we could reach out to the Washington State Department of Commerce and get some feedback. Most of their involvement is.
There's just review.
And review.
Yeah, they, theirs is just review once we've gone through all the steps and we just have to show them, we did the environmental review, we've done the public hearings, we've, council has approved this and, and then they go through and it takes three to six months. They have up to six months, I think, to do it. We can ask them to review it quicker and sometimes they approve that and we'll do it in three months as opposed to six, but, but there are the public hearings involved. It goes through, through the planning committee to do the public hearings and all of that. But there's not a cost involved with having that part, their responsibility is the Commerce Department.
Okay, and I can tell you, as you probably already know, we have an excellent, if not outstanding, relationship with the Department of Commerce. I don't think we would be met with much opposition from it. So, all right, I think I know where we're going with it. So we'll keep this on the agenda as we work our way through the nuanced details. Okay, all right then. With that having been completed, let's go to item number four, brief discussion of landscaping and watering along the street. That is, is obviously an item of concern. You can't drive on the new pavement without noticing the lovely seeded section. But we're still uncertain whether or not it's a right-of-way or easement. Did we get any sort of clarity on the definition of?
I haven't got information on the definition yet, but it is a right-of-way. The question is, what does that mean?
So that's not a question, it is, it is.
According to the surveyor, he's the one who is supposed to be the professional, he told us it's a right-of-way.
All right, well, what, what that means is uncertain, yes, to us as far as what, what options we have for that property. But what we do know for sure is that there is grass seed there and it is hot and it's not raining, which is unusual. So the question is, how we can keep that grass seed from, from wasting it? And what we can do as a community to landscape it in a way that restores and creates the objective of the outcome of it. So I know that we have Tracy Durham, the pastor of the Assembly of God Church here. I know that he's, I invited him to come because he approached me a few days ago with a suggestion. And if the council wouldn't mind, I'd invite Pastor Durham to inform the council of what you are proposing.
Well, we've had a lot of talk around community and how bald and naked the area looks and a lot of people complaining that, that the trees were removed and that there's no budget to restore those. And that's certainly part of the beautification of, of the downtown would be to restore that area with some grass and trees. So our church board has decided that we would like to make a contribution to the city of Vader. And I would like to present a check for five hundred dollars for purchasing trees to go along the, the front of the, that landscaped area. We looked at some prices and for eighty to ninety dollars, you can buy some very nice like red maple that are seven to eight feet tall already. So they're fairly mature trees. And we, we're part of the community and we've been here for eighty-one years and I'd like to look out my window and see some. And I'd like to look out my window and see some nice trees out there along with the nice grass. And so I want to present this check tonight for $500 to the city.
This is an unexpected and a windfall that reflects the positive influence that your group has had on this community. So with that, that gives us some direction. So with this, perhaps that would spur or inspire some insight from the council, suggestions? We have two comments here. Dr. Kevan Stone, Hallie?
This is just a suggestion. I think it's very generous of the Assembly of God Church to do this. While you're picking out your trees, be sure they do not have roots that are going to uproot your cement and cause damage, because we've dealt with that with our church. There are multiple buildings where it was great that they planted, you know, maples and stuff, but now sidewalks are buckling. So we have to keep that in mind, just to make sure.
Okay, note, sidewalk, yes.
How are you going to water the trees and the grass, other than the nine months of year you don't need to?
That's the big issue.
It is a big issue.
If we don't have a way to water them, we don't have our closest spigot that we have access to that Warden Park. And that's, you have to run a hose way up and across the street, you know, to get to it. So that's really the big question. Does anybody have any suggestions for that?
It's my understanding that I think Rich still has a big water tank and I think Andy gave him an electric pump for it, but it's still.
Well, I have spoken to Rich about it. He was very supportive of the concept, except that he doesn't want to spend all day doing it.
Where was he getting the water?
Oh, he's been getting it from Warden Park right now.
Oh, yeah. That's a core fact.
We're aware of it. So, but we have had conversations with our employee, John, of course. And his thought was that we could acquire a very large water container that I believe is pressurized and that with that, he could, on a regular scheduled basis, water it. It might be more efficient and effective that way than relying on a volunteer. But I'm not sure what the cost of that would be. I'm pretty sure it's about $250. But his time, is that a premium, as it is, as you, I'm sure, are well aware?
Poor John, he's got a million jobs. Need to get the fire department to come out and water it.
I think we need to have Rex come out immediately, seriously, immediately to save the grass.
Right, no, we're aware of that. So that is an issue at hand. So we knew we're having this meeting. Yes?
I'm seeing these rubber-baited water containers, we'll put it this way, that they have in the back of maybe a pickup.
Water pools? Is that what you're talking about? They've got like a cage?
No, no, no. This is like a...
Water buffalo.
Just like a big swimming pool, it's this tall and you hook a hose up to it. It's just a water container.
Yeah, that's what we're referring to.
Yeah, and you can get a trailer from Harper Frees.
I have a trailer.
And mount it on there. And a small water pump.
How, how far is it from the jail to, say, the post office? Is that like?
It's not the distance to go, it's getting underneath the cement on that street. Otherwise, you could do a drip system through there.
Right, yeah, but.
You can't go under unless you burp, can you?
Yeah, you can, you can.
We've thought of that.
You can blow a hole or you can line bore a hole. I'm just thinking for now, we just run hoses.
Oh, drag a hose down?
Yeah, from the jail to, I mean.
To 300 feet, a drip hose down and let it.
Oh, drip hose?
Drip hose. Not drip hose for that, but later.
We're not going to have to water it forever.
No, especially the trees.
That grass, as soon as the October rains hit, the grass will be this high.
Well, it is just, it is August, Joe. Look at your little calendar.
I'm saying, we're just going to do this for two months. We're going to invest in equipment and everything.
Well, just water hoses in.
Yeah, just two months.
Okay, well, it's in Rocket Sands.
So what, we would have to run the water hose if we ran it from Warden Park and have to go across Sixth Street? But you could put one of those.
Like do two-by-fours down or something?
Do those, that's not, okay. So that it doesn't damage the hose, you mean?
Yeah, and then they can just drive that hose.
How long do you think it would have to run? Because I'm thinking, you're talking about like a sprinkler, right? Running sprinkler. So I wonder how long it would have to run every day? Would it be every day? I mean, I don't know anything about.
No, and the other thing is, is Rich is...
Put a cat food dish out there and when the cat food dish gets full of water, it's good.
Rich is very generous and he waters night, morning and night. Maybe he would be available to go down and at least turn the sprinkler on while he's getting his water down there for just a short period of time and then turn it back off when he gets down. Because I think it's about 40 minutes. He's down there watering 40, 45 minutes. That should at least give it a drink.
I have a agronomy background and we used to run the golf course that I helped run for 10 years. We run our sprinkler system about five minutes a day.
Five minutes, wow. Well, and Ken, I would think that if you did too much at this early stage on those seeds, they would just wash away. If you put too much water on it, would be my thought also, because they're so dry.
I mean, I don't know what, how dry the grass is right now, but, I mean, I haven't looked, but that's, that's, by this date, when we had green grass.
Okay, well, I think we have some direction with council's approval and with the receipt of this very generous proposal, we'll engage in research to find trees that, oh, does the council, we'd like your input.
What about fruit trees?
Bees?
No.
But I would suggest like Casa Rock, I mean, they have beautification projects galore down their streets and they have trees and it'd be an idea to just check them, what they've gotten into. Just, just for a jumpstart, you know?
I know that Mike mentioned.
There was, there was a guy on Craigslist. We bought five or six trees. He had fruit trees, but he also had a bunch of others. And they were bare root, they were like 10 bucks each, so. What's that?
Right.
Well, they're, they're six feet tall.
The bigger, if more developed they are, I think it's still advantageous.
Tracy's visualizing the beauty.
Something changes color.
Yes.
Who yachts down in the, in Woodland would be a good place to look at. They have real big, big trees.
And along that line, like Hallie was saying, the PUD has a list of trees that are sidewalk trees or utility trees or whatever. They don't get up into the utility lines and they don't have the roots, so PUD has a list of those trees that they'll give you.
Okay, and all right, we'll talk to Castle Rock and we'll contact your source there and we'll do research with that place in Woodland. We're hopping on it.
And reach out to Rich.
Yeah, was somebody going to reach out to Rich? Was that the city going to reach out to Rich? Do we need to make a motion by 200 feet of water hose and sprinklers? I think that'll be under $400, so I think the mayor could have.
I would donate, I have a whole bunch of hoses, I don't know how good they are. I think they're still good, but they're big, bulky, regular hoses. I would happily donate them to the city. Because I've donated pretty many switching hoses.
Loan or donate?
No, give them to you guys.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Look at that, the whole problem just got solved.
Tracy can't keep giving much.
Yes, it's most kind and generous. Well, all right, I think we have, we've got solutions on the horizon in that regard. So it's, and we'll get on it quickly because of the grass seed. With that, then I think we've covered all of our faces and our agenda topics. I always forget that. I wonder why.
We have five people on the topic today.
This is good.
First is Tracy Durham. Did you have more to talk about?
Pastor Tracy Durham, River Z and Vader Assembly of God Church. First of all, I'd like to say we are very grateful that the construction equipment is gone. My office is on the corner there and I have not been able to have a nap for several weeks. The project to A Street has created some challenges for us. The west side of our building, as, and we've talked about this for the last year and a half, we are now subject to increased flooding because of the raised road bed. Certain considerations have been made to us at the onset of this project that a storm drain or catch basin would be placed on our side of the street. And I don't know if it was budget constraints, but that, that didn't happen. So we're now faced with some rather expensive projects to mitigate flooding issues from undermining our foundation and our sidewalks. So we're going to, first of all, we're going to have to raise our sidewalks on that side of the building five to six inches before the ground, before any paving or anything could be done. It's just too low, the, the street raised several inches, is already several inches higher. So we're, we're going to have to take care of that, first of all, we're getting bids for that. And then additionally, because there is no drains on that side of the street, the water has to go somewhere, which would mean that we're going to have to find a way of tapping into the stormwater system. We have a drain there now and they ran some water through it, but they could not find where the water was going. They pulled the manhole cover off and they didn't see any water flowing there. So it's flowing somewhere, it's tied into a line somewhere under the street and it's believed that it maybe runs out and crosses over behind Andy Wilson's house and goes down the street there. But that has yet to be determined. We have estimated cost for storm drain, to pave that little section there and raising the sidewalks in the neighborhood of $15,000 to $17,000. We don't really have a choice in the matter because it will undermine our building. So I'm, I'm here to ask the city for some assistance with a couple of areas, if you would consider. First of all, if there could be perhaps a variance given to us on the form of the cost of the permits for doing these projects to help mitigate some of the expenses, the cement, the storm drain and the paving, if that could be a consideration. Because, we're doing this because of the project on A Street. It has, it has created this issue for us.
I have to note to the council that the three-minute constraint is up, but would you want to extend?
Yes.
I just have one additional request and that is if the city could in any way assist us in locating the proper drain and if there's any plans, any, anything that could help us locating that would save us a lot of expense of digging down and trying to find where those lines go. So those two areas, if we could be some consideration given towards the permit fees to do this work and to help in locating the stormwater, proper stormwater runoff so that when we, the planning is made for the asphalt, it can be done properly and according to oil. So would there be any questions?
Well, actually, public comment isn't the forum.
For the council.
Yes, we will initiate research and we will get it in front of the council. I know time is of the essence, right?
Okay, thank you.
But thank you and let's talk.
Yes.
Be in touch.
Okay, next is Doug Williams.
Doug Williams, 626 G Street. I was looking at the A Street improvement. What, what the, the result of this is, it looks very nice. Unfortunately, the fool that designed this put a dog leg in the, in the sidewalk. With, with that addition, he wiped out six or eight parallel parking spaces. Or 30 to 40 diagonal parking spaces. Also, they extended the, the street and sidewalk. They ended that halfway in, into the city's, the city, what was it, Sixth Street in front of the Assembly of God Church, that street. Halfway into the street. I, I think this was a real poor design and somebody should have rejected that plan to begin with.
Thank you.
Okay, Ken Jocelyn?
Ken Jocelyn, 522 Seventh Street. Two topics. I made a complaint about a month ago, month and a half ago regarding the RV camping spot that we have behind my house. There is now tents there. It's making my, value of my property go down very immensely. I was very worried about this July and August about a fire starting in that field that's in between my house and there. So I was just want to see what's going on with that. It's probably going to, everything that I've heard is probably going to be a pain of ours to get the people out of there, but we do have a code for that, so I would like to have some matter progress with that issue. The other issue that I just came about is our garbage fees that we have. When I first moved here, moved from Casa Rock and we didn't have to pay garbage fees. So when we moved here, I was not very happy about having to pay garbage fees and have somebody tell me that I had to take my garbage and have it paid for when I can take it to Longview and pay for it and a lot cheaper and I run errands and stuff like that. So I just all of a sudden dawned on me the other day that people around me don't have garbage service. And so I asked them, I'm not going to bring them any names, you guys can do your own research. And they said, no, we don't have garbage service. So I called our garbage collector. I said, how many people have garbage service in, in the City of Vader? And he said, we're about 85 to 90%,. So there's 15, 10 to 15% of people in this town that are not paying for garbage service. So I was wondering why I have to pay for garbage service. I'm not going to be one of those people that collect garbage. I'll take it to the garbage, but I'm spending $40 every two months on service, on something that I don't really want to pay for.
Thank you. Maybe I shouldn't eject here, but when we hear comments like this, I mean, it's not intended to initiate council discussion on it, but we take notes and we would more than welcome. We're not ignoring these comments here. All right, next.
City Radcliffe.
City Radcliffe, 1027th Street. We have been misled.
We have been misled. For months and months and months, the mayor has said that he has been in contact with the city of Chehalis Building Department, and he is working with them to somehow, at some point, get that, get us a, for them to take over our building department. So I called the city of Chehalis, and I said, so where is this at, and when can we expect a proposal? And they said they had no idea what I was talking about. They said they haven't heard from the city of Vader or anybody in connection with that for months and months and months, and they thought it was a dead deal. They suggested we call city of Naperville, because they use Naperville from time to time when they get overwhelmed. So I called the city of Naperville, talked to the clerk, the treasurer, the mayor, the building inspector. None of them have heard from anybody from the city of Vader about whether or not they would be open to taking over our building inspection duties. In fact, and by the way, the mayor was not happy about your comment about him being checked out. He doesn't feel he is. So I'm, once again, after a year and a couple of months, and people are supposed to be working on this, would somebody please contact the city of Naperville? Because Chehalis has no plans to do it. The person they're hiring is a planner, he's not an inspector. He can do inspections, but that's not going to be his focus. And so we need to have this redressed. It's not financially fiscal or fiscal responsible to use the Mattup North, he's too expensive. And I personally don't feel he does a good job. So would somebody from the city, the council, anybody in charge, please contact Naperville? Because when I talked to them, they were very happy to give us a proposal. They said they were about half price of what Townsend had been charging us. And he gets good reviews from the city of Chehalis, the building person there, Brian something Cooper, I think. No, Morris, Brian Morris. He gets good reviews from the city of Chehalis, and it is an option for the council to consider.
Excellent. I'd be happy to brief the council with more factual information if you'd like, at any time. All righty, next.
Last is Donna Rogers.
Donna Rogers, 806 10th Street. Thank you, Cindy, for bringing that to our attention, that we've been lied to all this time about that. And I would like the council to consider letting the public know how you're going to pay off that $10,000 loan that you got from the sewer fund. Thank you.
Okay, very great. Appreciate the involvement of our public and the attention and efforts of the council to continue improving the community. With that, I think we've covered our agenda. We've got this meeting adjourned at 7:35 PM.